Calling the meeting to order, please. Starting off with pullé for Mr. Endo.
Can I have everybody rise? Let's pray. Well, first of all, I want to just thank you for sparing us any destruction from the tsunamis and from the hurricanes that have passed. I thank you, Harvey, for preserving our islands with your grace. And Lord, once again, we ask your blessing over our coastline. Pour in your love in the hearts of many. Take away the anger, the hatred, replace it with your love, your compassion. And Lord, as a board, may we radiate your love and do all things to honor you, that YNI will be awesome. For Peterson, Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, next on the agenda, we're doing election of officer for secretary. Last time, we didn't have any but any takers. Any takers for secretary? Wing one.
So, so for the, for board members that may or may not know, so the secretary assists me with the minutes essentially. So I'll do the minutes on my end after the meeting in a timely manner, send it to the secretary. The secretary will look through for accuracy, maybe something I may have missed, and they send it back to me and as well as the board members with the edits they may have made, or if there were no edits, then they're just good to go. And those minutes that go through myself, the secretary, and the board chair will be the ones that get posted on our website and that go out in the physical mail out for approval at the following board meeting. So you don't have to essentially, you don't have to do the minutes. I do the minutes, but you will go through and you'll check them for accuracy. Make sure there's no issues, any problems, and then it comes back to me.
So once again, any takers for secretary?
Holy for me.
Okay, I'll continue to take. Okay, now Chair Nani Peterson is taking this on. Mahalo. All in favor, Nani Peter, for Nani Peterson, secretary?
Aye.
Aye.
And cross online. Okay, next, we're doing city emergency first responders. So first up is Honolulu Fire Department.
Evening, evening, board. Good evening, board. My name is Jason. I'm a captain at the YNI fire station. I have the statistics for July. We had two structure fires, four wildland brush fires, 11 nuisance fires, and one activated alarm with no fire. 169 medical alarms, three motor vehicle crashes with collisions, one ocean rescue. Fire safety tip is emergency notifications and resources. Understanding how you'll be alerted during your urgent emergencies and knowing where to find accurate official information is a key part of being prepared. Learn more at honolulu.gov/dm/stayingformed. Some alert methods are opt-in alerts. These notify individuals who have signed up to receive alerts via text, email, or app push notifications based on user preferences. Alerts are not sent based on location. Systems include HNL Alert and official government social media. You can sign up at hnlalert.gov to receive notifications, and alerts may be shared by official city, state, and partner accounts. Another way is public alert and warning systems. These systems deliver urgent lifesaving information during immediate threats to public safety. In OUI, this includes emergency alert system, wireless emergency alerts, outdoor warning sirens depending on the emergency. One or more of these systems may be activated. Are there any questions?
Chair, I have a question for HFD.
Go ahead.
Mahalo, guys, for always coming. I appreciate HFD, so does HPD. My question is, was there any findings or the investigation of how the fire started in Maile where the Ahunas lost everything and then we lost the life of that Kupuna Wahine?
No, I haven't seen an official report yet. I'm not sure if they're technically done with that report, but I'm sure it'll come out later.
So my next question, when it does come out, will you be able to bring it forward towards the neighborhood board meeting when it does come out and when you folks come out here?
Discussing the details of the findings of the cause, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, we can, we can forward that up and then they can put it, make sure CRO puts it in their report.
Thank you. And then also for the ones that was, the next day was up in Lulule Valley and going over to Nanakuli.
Yeah.
You could also find the findings for that, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
I had a question. I always remember after the Lahaina fire, these, the fire chiefs came and to inform the community that the city, I'm pretty sure it was the city, was establishing this new department to address the wildfires. And that was the last time we ever heard from them. So I was wondering if you know about them and if, if they can piggyback on your report. What are they doing? Because like you addressed, the wildfires are happening. But I'm just wondering, what is this department? If they formed it, what are they doing to address especially the issues in YNI? Because we have so many areas that facing another Lahaina fire.
Do you know the name of the department?
You know, I don't remember. All I know is shortly after, right, the Lahaina fires, did somebody develop this new department that's supposed to be addressing and look at the prevention of wildfires?
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure if, if, was it Maui specific or was it a statewide?
No, it was statewide. And they, they came to, they came to our board. They came to our neighborhood.
Fire Marshal. Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, Fire Marshal, she's under the state. So as far as I know, they create, yeah, they create their own laws and recommendations. I'm not sure as far as the enforcement or how we fall into line with that, but I can send that up to the upstairs and they can answer your questions about them.
Thank you for the Honolulu alerts and a reminder to our community how important that is. Just my example, on that day with the tsunami, I had gone into the mountains at 8:00 AM. Me, myself, and I, just by myself. No radio, no nothing except for this. And I started receiving those alerts. And I want to appreciate that and thank, thank you for bringing that back up and letting people be reminded of that importance of having that. Because all I had was a cell and that was the only way I knew that there was a tsunami. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Honolulu Fire Department. Appreciate it. Next up, Honolulu Police Department, HPD.
We be madam chair, members of the community. Corporal Pagan, the Honolulu Police Department District Eight Community PRC Team. I have your stats for July. In July, we had 23 motor vehicle thefts, eight in our area, 14 burglaries, five in our area, 110 thefts, 38 in our area, 17 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, six in our area. There's a total of 1,656 citations issued, 9,111 calls for service, 2,630 in our area. The only other thing that I did want to bring up was that on August 15th, Friday, so next week, Friday, the Honolulu Police Department District Eight, in partnership with Department of Law Enforcement, is going to be holding a gun buyback at the YNI police station from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Anybody turning in, would like, that would like to turn in their guns for disposal, destruction, can do so at the YNI police station. No questions asked. People want a receipt so they can get it removed from their name as far as their registry. We'll be handing out property receipts so that people know that their guns were received and submitted for destruction. The Department of Law Enforcement is going to be issuing out $100 gift cards for handguns and rifles, $200 for semi-automatic and automatic weapons. Again, it's no questions asked. We do ask that people enter the YNI station via, oh, shoots, what is that street? On the, the west side of the, the station, instead of coming up YNI Valley Road and coming into the station from the back parking lot by Pokai Bay area. We'll have officers there kind of directing. We're actually going to be blocking off one of the lanes coming out of the station so people will see us. We'll be putting up a sign most likely tomorrow to let the community know. So again, if anybody wants to drop off their, their guns, feel free to come down and get a gift card and relieve yourself of the burden of having that gun. Other than that, I'm open to any comments, questions, or concerns.
Any comments, questions, or concerns for anybody come up? Just state your name.
Hi, aloha, I'm Lina. And I guess maybe one of my requests to HPD is Pokai Bay. And if there was any way that at least once a day, that an officer would be able to park their car and actually walk in the bathrooms. There's a lot of illegal activities happening in the bathrooms and us as community members can only put ourselves at risk so much. After the previous sweeps and the closing of Cedar Farms, there seems like there's more activities happening at Pokai Bay. So if, if anytime during the day, an officer could park their car and walk, literally walk in the bathrooms, I think that would make a difference in the safety for the community. Mahalo.
Okay, we'll go ahead and let the patrol commanders know about that. And we do, again, we do ask the community that if they go in there and they see something, by all means, call 911. We'll have an officer come down. Unfortunately, a lot of times we do go somewhere, people will leave, but then they'll come back after we leave. So again, we do ask the community to call 911 and we'll have an officer to check it out. Thank you.
Officer Pagan, Pikachu Shelby-Belie here. Thank you for coming on. I'm going to be attending the Honolulu Police Commission tomorrow with the 2:00 o'clock meeting. Everyone can see on the coconut wireless what's going down with Chief Joe Logan, the lawsuits and stuff. But before I complain to them, could you please tell me and the neighborhood board, the people listening, what's the best thing I can ask the police commissioners for help and support on the west, on the west side? Last time, Chief Roddy Vanek said, hey, the most calls we get is from Kaliki and YNI, and that's how we're distributing the manpower. But we know you need resources. They haven't finished the jail yet, X, Y, and Z. So what can you say to tell us that what you need, like help us Jerry Maguire you, to help us succeed?
Well, in terms Chief Vanek did mention at the last neighborhood, I mean, sorry, the police commission, that they are looking to assign 12 more officers out to the district. We're expecting them in November time period with the graduation of the academy class as well as Major Beckley and the department is looking at adding two beats within the district. One of them, I believe, is going to be a beat 853, which is going to add. So we'll have a total of seven officers in the, the YNI area. And then that's not including the four, I believe, that's in the Nanakuli area. But again, it's, it's just a matter of getting the officers, getting everybody trained, having the openings and having people come out. You know, we are constantly recruiting, so by all means, push your legislators to work on retention, work on recruiting, and, and make it a little bit more enticing for people to actually want to join the police department. Again, my personal opinion with that is a lot of the people in the community demonize the police department for, for what we do instead of appreciating for what we have to do. And I think the more the community gets behind officers for what they have to do and what they deal with, more people may be interested in actually being an officer. So again, that's more for the community. But again, we're just awaiting the plans to get the new officers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Corporal Pagan. Online, there is a person with D, capital D. Go ahead, state your name.
My name is Darlene, and I was wondering if HPD could patrol the Makua side of Water Street. We have some real issues with parking on corners and it makes it very dangerous. You have to completely go on the opposite side of the road in which you should be traveling and like up around Kapuui and water. Very, they're on both corners. So you have to go pretty far out onto Water Street to see if there's any cars coming. And that's all. Thank, I do want to thank you folks for the work you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody in person, okay, come to the mic and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Carlo Tanwakio. The last meeting, I was wondering or asked if it would be possible to get data on DUIs or citations? Wondering if that was possible to get or if there's any update on the number of citations specific to DUIs?
Yeah, in June, we had 27 DUI arrests. One individual was arrested for habitual DUI. In July, we had 27 DUI arrests, two for habitual DUIs and one juvenile, which would be someone under the age of 18 that was arrested for DUI.
Thank you.
Corporal Pagan, I have a question. So on the crime stats mapping honolulupd.org, is that the information that we can actually retrieve in regards to DUIs?
I don't think they put the DUIs on the crime mapping. The crime mapping is more for property and personal crimes. They, they don't put the stats on for, excuse me, traffic violations and traffic arrests. Unless it's actually an injury or a negligent homicide type of case.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Anybody else in person for HPD? Go ahead, Dana.
Just based on the statement that was made in regards to demonizing, you know, police officers within our community or any community at, at large, what is the efforts by HPD to kind of integrate some sort of outreach? So we have better relations between the department and communities?
Well, as far as the outreach, our community PC team is out in the community at all times. I'm not sure what you mean by relationship. We work with the neighborhood security watchers. We work with community members that way. You know, we, we are, you know, I don't want this to come out the wrong way, but we are out there. And if people want to engage, we, they can come up to us and we can talk to them. But it's hard for me to direct people to areas or direct our officers to people that may not want to speak with us. So we are out there, so.
I'm thinking that the visibility of the offices within community might not be high. And so therefore, maybe there's a disconnect between community seeing what actual officers are doing outside of regular patrol times. You know, so if we could get specific dates or that officers are in the community providing outreach or some sort of education, maybe that might build better relationships with community.
I can, I can double check, but we normally on our calendar, on the honolulupd.org calendar, honolulupd.org website, you can look at community events as far as what the officers are doing. If there's something that we're going to be participating within the community, such as the gun buyback. I believe we have a, you know, we have a couple of KK Kapuna ID events that we're scheduled to go to. Unfortunately, sometimes we don't put those on the calendar because it's like a private event for the schools. Not private, but you know, we do a KK ID for preschools and they don't really want the entire community coming out onto their campus to do the KK IDs. So we don't always put those on there. But the ones that are open to the public, we do normally put on the calendar so people can follow that and obtain information as far as where we're going to be and stuff like that. So hopefully that helps. But I'll, I'll double check to make sure that they're, they're keeping the, the calendar updated and stuff.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, again, your concern is that the demonizing, but I just want to, you know, visibility is important. Having kind of relationship with community is important. So that's all I'm asking.
I understand. You know, one of the things I meant, I was kind of lead to with the demonization is, you know, when we had the tsunami warning, there was a lot of people that were arguing with the policeman about having to do what they had to do, such as warning people about the beaches. Even at one point, we blocked off the road going into YNI for safety reasons. We had people calling telling us that we were doing what we were doing was illegal. We had one gentleman that actually started traveling westbound and the eastbound lanes to try to get around the roadblocks. You know, and, and, you know, I, I just ask that the community understand that, you know, for example, on that day, our team, the community PC team, we're actually on our way home when we got recalled to come back to work. You know, all of us have families. Five of my unit have kids under 10 and they had to go home, take care of their kids, and come right back to work. So again, the officers are putting themselves out there to help the community. And, and just asking that, you know, there's a little bit of understanding that, you know, just as much as people didn't want to be stuck in traffic, the officers kind of wanted to be home with their families, but they did their job and were out there, so.
Chair, again, comment.
Online, Johnny May, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is Johnny May. Thank you, Corporal Pagan, for everything that HPD does. In line with what Dana mentioned, just a comment, maybe on Wednesdays at Tomorrows is Kupuna Day, where Kupuna get a 5% discount. Maybe consider HPD presence on that day to hear from the Kupunas when they come out shopping, if they have any concerns, either Tomorrows or YNI store. Thank you for everything that you all do.
Thank you, Johnny May.
Thank you, Chair.
Hey, Corporal Pagan, always good to see you, brother. Mahalo for HPD efforts in keeping YNI safe. So my, my question was kind of like piggybacking off of Dana's on like being visible, like, because when I was growing up, we had Officer Gray, Officer Kelohe, Officer Nabriga, and Sergeant Kamai. And they would, they was the regulars. Yes, so what I'm saying, like, you know, every, all the kids, everybody knew them, like, you know, we would actually run away when we see officers, especially Officer Kelohe. And, you know, Officer Gray, we was just afraid of Officer Gray because of his statue and whatnot. But the thing was, they was out there in the community and they was the regulars and they was from YNI. So that made a big difference in, in curbing, you know, because when I was teenagers, Kelohe, but I don't see that over here in YNI anymore. Yeah, so is that a, why is that, Corporal Pagan? Because, you know, because there was a, they were a big deterrent to us adolescents when we was growing up, you know, especially when we seen, especially Officer Kelohe. But when we seen them, we were like, oh, we was flying right or we was, we was going back to school or, you know what I mean? So I don't see that anywhere.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate that. And to be honest, you know, our officers would prefer to do that type of activity. However, as, as Pikachu had mentioned, you know, with the short staffing, you know, with the size of the district, the growing population, you know, it, it makes it difficult for these officers to get out of their car and go and talk to someone without having to be interrupted by another call. With the work that they have to do with their reports and stuff, a lot of times they are going from case to case. You may see an officer at the, at the YNI station, but it may be because he's either using the bathroom or trying to turn in evidence or write a report. So a lot of times, they don't have that time. We, as a community PC team, try to fill that void by going out to the community and being visible. But again, you know, we get a lot of requests from not just YNI, but Kapale and Nanakuli and, and, and Eba Beach to, to be out there in, in, in the community. And us being those people, unfortunately, it's hard for us to be at all areas at all times. So we do, as people request our presence at events and activities, we do try as much as possible to accept those requests and be out there so we can try to be out there and mingle with them and get to know them and let them get to know us.
Corporal, so what, Corporal Pagan, what is the rotation? Because like we see plenty new police officers on YNI and like they're in for like maybe like three months stint, and then we, we see a whole bunch of new ones. So because of that, there's no appealing established, there's no relationship established, you know, with these new officers coming in, especially if they're not from YNI. So that's why I was just, I know that since I was growing up from here, you know, frick, we get a, what, we get over a million people on Oahu, but, you know, still yet, it really, it really a matter that, you know, we knew who are, who are, you know, police officers that was from YNI. But now that we have, you know, plenty that come in and it seems like there's like a three-month rotation. What is the rotation cycle on that for new officers coming into YNI?
We, we have a, normally the police department has a rotation about every three months. So for, yeah, about for a year. With that, it's basically officers putting in to transfer in or out. So it's not like because they're here, we rotate them out. You know, I've, I've been in the district for 27 years. Sergeant Moroka's been in the district for about 25. You know, so there are a lot of us that are out here and have stayed out here. A lot of times when, when the recruits or the police officers graduate from the academy, they become on the road, their first assignment is, is sent wherever we need the manpower. We, we can't force them to stay if they decide to go to another district. You know, there's a lot of people, you can talk to a lot of officers. There's a lot of officers that feel uncomfortable working in the district where they live only because there's concern about, well, if I arrest somebody, am I going to be attacked by his family? Or, you know, just, just living, living where you're working. There's some of us that feel opposite where if I got to do my job, I wanted to do it where I live and, and keep the area that I live safe. But again, you know, we don't, we don't force officers to work where they live. We don't force them to leave either way. You know, when they come out to the district, it is up to them to decide whether or not they want to stay in the district or not. You know, with the command that we have with Major Beckley, I, I believe that we do have quite a few people that even if they don't live out here, they end up staying because they appreciate her direction and, and her guidance and, and her goals. So we do get those, but unfortunately, we do get some that, you know, they're, they're, they're from Hawaii Kai and they graduate from the academy, they finish their, their rotation and they come out. Their first assignment is out in YNI and because of traffic reasons, they don't want to have to drive back and forth. So, but people are now rotated out by choice by the department. It's people deciding to work in a different area.
Fair enough, Corporal. And Mel Beckley, yeah, Major Beckley, she's a C rider as well, so right on.
Thank you, sir.
There is no other Q and A for this. So before we move on to the next agenda item, I forgot to make the announcement. We do have a restroom. It's just the men's restroom. I know we have some ladies that are in the physical meeting space. Ladies, if you go use the restroom, you can shut the door. Just please make sure you put the doorstopper back into it just so that we're cognizant of both male and female using the same restroom. Just wanted to make sure that announcement was on the record and make sure everybody knew in person. Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, Jeffrey, if I could just say one more thing, just, uh, that we, for the gun buyback, we are asking that people use Bayview Street. Sorry, I forgot the name of the street. They come through Bayview Street and into the YNI station on YNI Valley Road. That'll make everything a lot of, a lot easier on the traffic flow. Thank you.
Thank you, Corporal Pagan. Next agenda item, Honolulu Ocean Safety Department. Yeah, right there. Aloha.
Good evening, board. Thank you for having us here again. My name is Kelly Cron at the district captain out here. I'd like to give you the stats for June. We haven't got them updated for July. It'd be another week or so. Sorry. For Macau Beach, we had 27,475 people. We had 350 preventive actions, 660 public contacts, and 181 minor first eights that we had there. Pokai Bay, Pokai Bay, we had an attendance of 22,4518 preventive actions. Public contact was 2,540. Uh public contact was two thousand five hundred and forty and we had uh a hundred and sixty-five minor first aids there. Uh Keavulua, we had twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety people. We had little over three thousand five hundred preventive actions. We had four thousand seven hundred of public contacts. We had three rescues there. Uh we also had ninety-eight minor first aids there. For some of the incidents that we had for the month of June, uh we did have again another um tiger shark at Macaw Beach. We cleared the beach, kept everybody out. We had a tiger shark at Keavula again, cleared the beach for the day. Um sorry, we also had at Pokai Bay, we had a, we responded to a knife fight, uh the guards, somebody got stabbed in the bathroom. We admitted administered first aid. We also had a seizure at Pokai Bay in the women's bathroom. And we also had a anaphylactic reaction to a jellyfish uh sting from a sixty-year-old female patient. We responded to two boating incidents. Um a lady was having a seizure on the boat. We responded to them with our rescue skis. And the other one was uh two girls got seriously stung by jellyfish. So it was kind of a busy month, but um I'll get you the stats for July as soon as we compile them. Any questions?
Chair, good question. How's it, Captain Coons? Right on. Hey, we appreciate you guys too, you know, Ocean Safety, especially this side. My question was like, um how you guys establish the the figures, the numbers like for Macaw, Keavula, Pokai, is that the rough estimate or?
Um so they write in their daily log sheets and then we tally them, then they get sent to the database in Honolulu. And then they tally the whole division.
Okay, thank you for that. And then um like you're gonna come back next month with July's information. Cause summertime, I would get South swell, I had a big south swell. Yeah, so was there any rescues, like, cause that, you know? Yeah, it's.
Miley Point, we had uh surfers in distress. Uh Tumbleland was crazy packed and uh Kali Point was was pretty busy too. Uh the first part of the swell wasn't really hitting Yokoh, Keavula. So it wasn't too bad down there for some reason. I think the angle was just off the swell a little bit. But this next swell, Thursday, Friday, it looks like it's gonna be pretty big.
Yeah, cause I know Waikiki and Alamoano is.
Oh, crazy.
Yeah, and my early point was going up too, so thank you. South swell's coming in somewhere.
Ready, yeah.
Aloha, KK. Um so the vessel interaction. Was that a commercial vessel?
That was a commercial vessel.
It was a commercial.
One of the dolphin tour boats, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else?
Nope. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, board business, so oh, sorry. Board of Water Supply, B W S, your turn, sir. Thank you.
Aloha, uh Koai Hilo with the Board of Water Supply. Um monthly notice, oh, good evening, board members and community. Uh glad to state that last month we had no major main breaks in the area. Uh general water announcements, uh water wisdom program. The Border Water Supplies Water Wisdom Program is designed to support condominiums and townhomes, residents, owners and property managers in reducing water usage. Excuse me. Um this can help lower operating costs while safeguarding our drinking water today and for generations to come. Um program highlights, onsite or virtual presentations, offering practical tips to reduce water usage, water audits for communal areas and personalized audits for Kupuna and conservation materials and more. All services and materials are free. Find out more at www.bordewatersupply.com backslash water wisdom. Um last month, I got a few questions from community members. Do I read them out here or, okay? Okay, so uh community member Carlo, I have a hard time saying your last name, bro. Yeah. Uh so Carlo had uh stated that there was a mona, water main break in Macau near his home on on the Helly Street. He wanted to know what does, what was the cause of the main break. Um it's difficult for Border Water Supply to pinpoint the exact cause of main breaks as multiple factors are often involved. This includes the one on on the head, Allah Helly Street, uh which was installed in uh forty-one years ago in nineteen eighty-four. Most common causes of main breaks include aging infrastructure, ground shifting or settling, pipe corrosion, pressure fr- uh fluctuations. Uh to help reduce the number of main breaks in the future, B W S continues to invest in proactive maintenance and long-term infrastructure improvements. This includes replacing aging water mains, using data to prioritize high-risk areas and making upgrades that improve system reliability across Oahu. Um he had also stated that there is a weekly pressure release near his home um that shoots water out and impacts his property before going down the nearby storm drain. He wanted to know what was the reason for this. Um our reply is the water shooting into the property was coming from the fire hydrant across the street. Uh the hydrant is driving me nuts, okay. The hydrant was being flushed for um as part of our scheduled maintenance. Please note that we have instructed our staff to direct any flushing away from customers' property. We regret any inconvenience this may have caused. Uh he says that there's a new, uh Carlos said that there's a new resort being built in Macau and how will that impact the infrastructure for the rest of Macau Valley? Uh we are currently waiting to hear back from our project review team and unfortunately have not received a response yet. We expect to have a response for the September meeting. Um we had a concern from Kala, I didn't catch his last name, from Puuhonua, uh Maoka. Their their newer location. He had stated that whenever there's heavy rains in Y N I Valley, it would flood their area, making it very difficult for them. And who would he contact to uh mitigate this issue? Um we recommend the community member contact the sitting County of Honolulu's Department of Facility Maintenance, Stormwater Quality Division for flood mitigation issues. And lastly, um one of the community members had stated that the repaving we had done in front of Burger King was subpar. Okay, this is from my up above me. We greatly appreciate the community members' feedback and understand how important it is for road paving to be done efficiently the first time, especially on heav- heavily traveled roadways like Farrington Highway. In response to your concern, we asked a Department of Transportation Road Inspector to check the paving work conducted by our contractor. The inspector determined that the road is in a, in acceptable condition and meets required standards. Please know that we are tr- we truly value your input and thank you for taking the time to share your observations. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, again, question. How's it going? Koai Hilo, right on. Um thank you for coming out and being a representative for B O W for us in Y N I Moku. Um my question is, so we we had a meeting, the Kupuna Council Y N I, Y N I Kupuna Council had a meeting with um the army and and um community members, um was, forget what day it was, Lina, but um B O W was there. And um I had asked, you know, cause we was talking about fire prevention, especially pre- preparedness being, you know, we're in fire season and what had happened in Lahaina, right, on August eight? And so my question um was, you know, when the inferno happened August eight up in Lahaina, never have water in the, in in the um
The pipes, yeah.
No, yeah, all the, all the fire hydrants. So my question for B O W is cause that day, August eight, that day was prime for us to, cause the winds was whipping up where like eighty miles, you know, because it was just getting supercharged by Kala and was just coming down and was dry. And if anybody with, you know, if, when start on fire, we would have, we would have got wiped out. So my question is like, is would is there enough water in the fire hydrants that we have up in Y N I Valley, all the way down in Y N I? You know, to at least try and, you know, slow down the process, the progress of if we have had an inferno over here.
I can check on that.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess my question is, uh recently I've I've uh seen a lot of work being done at the North Salt Road uh in uh Farrington Highway. But there's tons and tons of water being um uh spread all over there. And and I know construction sites, they always ask that be watered down and watered down. I guess my question is is that our drinking water that I see four or five uh water trucks over there just pounding the pounding the living daylights out of the water. And if it is our drinking water, can, you know, somebody uh do something about it. I mean, we we doing millions of gallons a day, uh just train them on the ground, so uh I would um, I'd like to hear how you guys, you know, is addressing that situation. I know it's not, it's not B W S itself, but
Right.
you know, it's 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 coming from guys, right? So
Yeah, it is.
Somebody gotta be accountable for all of that water. I mean, it's it's ridiculous. If you sit there for half an hour and you watch how many water trucks dumping water there, um you 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 have a major concern, especially uh uh especially with sixteen great grandkids coming around, so uh they might not get water for them. So I don't know what what the answer is, but maybe you guys can address it for me. Thank you.
Just to clarify, you're talking about the construction sites with the water tanker trucks that shoot water for dust control?
Uh not really, only the guys who shoot the water. It's it, because the the area, it 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 covers about um I would say a good uh football field size because they're extending, they're taking the two-lane road, Farrington Highway, and it apparently, I guess they go in for a four lane, uh coming in from Kapolei or or coming from North Salt Road. So, you know, um they claim that that's the new um I I guess job that's uh uh Border Water Supply is is taking credit for expanding the highway and stuff like that or or transportation. But um um it's just the idea of the, you know, the water that's being used. I mean, I I understand because all the houses are popping up right there next to Farrington Highway already, right? So uh but uh I I think it's gonna be a concern for us later on. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have Dana online. Dana, go ahead.
The question basically is in regards to mitigation, fire mitigation and more so um rain capturing. What is the department's plan in terms of how we're increasing rain production within our areas so that we are water sustainable within our community? Because does the department take statistics on how much rainfall there is currently within the Y N I Moku? And the impacts of those, of the rainfall that is occurring or not occurring and the long-term effects that it has on our community?
I'll have to check on that.
Don't they monitor the rainfall in regards to theirs? Uh they take it by sections all over the state and they actually have, I don't know what website, but I know there's one, that they actually monitor the rainfall in specific areas.
Yeah, um they have rain gauges located at different locations.
Can you follow up for the gauge on the website? Yes, please.
Okay, will do.
Thank you, appreciate that. And then we have Jan McKeppa online.
Aloha, um Jan McKeppa with Y N I Valley Homestead Community Association. Um it was brought to my attention um several times that the water pressure from the fire hydrant on Puhinalo Street um had very low water pressure. And so would the Board of Water Supply be able to check on it? I'm not sure if that's you folks, Kulianna, or whose Kulianna it is to check on it. Um that's
Sorry, go ahead.
Number one. Um and then the other one is um this coming Thursday, our Homestead Association will be doing a fire wise mitigation um throughout our neighborhood. So we'll be doing a neighborhood assessment. And um you know, so we're looking at mitigation, we're looking at fire breaks, um we're trying to ensure that our Y N I Valley Homestead has water and that the pressure um is there should a fire happen. So is that something you folks would be checking on?
Yeah, we can check. What was the street name again? We can check on the water pressure over there.
Okay. I I haven't heard of any other hydrants um that might have low water pressure. Uh but you know, I don't know if there is a way to check some of our other hydrants or if you guys gotta go to everyone and check. I'm not sure what the process is.
Yeah, uh we can check the whole street.
Okay, mahalo.
Chair, uh Chair, I get this one question for Jan.
Yes.
Tita Jan, what time is that, that um meeting Thursday?
Um we're gonna we're gonna be meeting at Kupuni Park at nine o'clock. Um and then we'll do a quick meet and greet and then we'll start doing the community assessment at nine thirty.
Okay, thanks, sis.
Okay.
We have one in-person community member. State your name, please.
Aloha, everybody. Michael William Capolino Eli. Um first thing is um the water up um Y N I Valley, gotta turn them on, cause no more water for us guys for drink. When you go up the the main road in Y N I Kai, usually the thing working, but you know what? You guys gotta put one sign so people can know that turn off the water when they power use them. Cause they just leaving them on, so that's why you guys leaving them off maybe, because they wasting the water, right? And then two is um the maintenance road on the other side, by the Rosa side, when the thing went up, the thing is dangerous. People getting hurt over there. I mean, it's a maintenance road. It's a Y N I Valley Kai, but it's on a uh about a housing by the Roses. I mean, I I bought this thing like six months ago, the thing still, still jam up the road. The road is like uh I think it's trenches. So you're gonna walk on the side, you're gonna keep dodging and if they do them one time, you don't need worry about them. But they're always fixing them, cause when I think a big rain, the thing go in the underneath the the pipe that's under the road. That thing just going right on the road and go down the road and make a river down the road. But if they get all these army engineers and whatever, they gotta make the road better. I mean, that the the cor- cor- corvette, the box that get on corvette underneath the road. So when the water come, all the trees and shit get stuck in them. You know what I mean? And then the the thing just flood and the thing right down the road that they just rebuild. And I think make a river and I think just keep going down the road and jam them all up and people get hurt. And then two, that guy by Angels Junkyard, like I said, up the road, the one with drill or drill the uh with drill and he said he private. Well, whoop-de-doo, he private. Somebody gotta be holding accountable for it. So when he turn on that water, when he, when he in drill, I don't know how far he in drill, maybe down to sea level, I don't know. I don't know his name. Should I forget his name? Uh yeah, okay. Well, the previous board, uh that's the last time I talk up here, cause he was on his side and I couldn't talk over here, you know what I mean? So this like my four months I never come. You know what I mean? Cause I was pissed. Cause you taking away my right to speak for my community. I want voice over here. You know what I mean? Not only work, work, work. I gotta take care of mountain too, that's my Juliana. Cause that's where the water come from and that's where I love, I love the mountain and the ocean. So this guy, when he turn on the water, something gonna jam up. It's not gonna be Puna La Ula, gonna be somebody down below. That thing affect, the thing is on chain reaction. Cause he went drill, he did. But he using a border water supply water on the road and he filling up his water. And he filling up his water tanks and going inside there, spraying for dust control. So how you could charge him for the ag water, guaranteed it's ag water. For spray all over and make whatever he making on his private land. So these guys supposed to come to this board, because they're private, right? They're private, they gotta hold accountable and bring them to the board, not way after what they do. Because they get money and they're from out of town. These guys gotta come to this board and say what they're gonna do, not do them and then come. Six, seven months later, oh, this is what we did. And it's damn too late. To select up by uh, they took all the rocks over there and we cannot do nothing already.
You get addresses, because that's important.
Ah, they know the address. I I bought this up like four months ago, five months, six. I keep on bringing them up.
Is it the the Angels Junkyard one?
No, yeah, above them.
Above the junkyard?
Yes.
Okay.
Ahmad's property. Ahmad's property.
Ahmad, yeah.
Yeah, Ahmad, you guys, I don't know, you guys know the name, Ahmad, yeah. Well, that's that's the guy.
Chair.
From Kailua, I don't know. He not from here. Money talks aside. He bribes somebody. He bribes somebody. That's the whole thing bribery.
Are are we able to request for him to do a presentation for next month? I don't. We got information for him.
Yeah, so 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 just for the the sake of the question. Um, residents for full disclosure are able to do something like that, just as long as the board one makes a motion to do that. But then they have to go through the necessary process that a regular presenter would. Provide the information, provide if it's a slideshow, if it's a verbal presentation, things like that. And if they need assistance, of course, they can reach out and I can help them with stuff like that.
Well, that's why I'm trying to say, the board gotta stop this kind of stuff, what they're doing on private land. It's not private, no matter if they bought them. That's not even theirs for do anything to them. It's not theirs, man. We all sovereign, come on. We all know that's not theirs, but they cannot just go over there and drill, bro, no matter what, how much money they get. Like I said, it's the bottom of the supply, they supposed to know. You know what I'm saying that? Because they're supposed to control the water, not the private owner.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
It's coming from here.
So the next one.
Four months I never come here, bro.
Huh? Okay, so we're moving on to board business. Uh, we're doing. Appointment of board committee chairs and vice chairs. So for transportation, um, Mr. Lanford, would you like to take transportation to be the chair?
It's it's hard for me to uh, be the chair, because I don't I don't use a computer. Um. I um, uh, I I don't have any computers for work on, but you have anybody that's wanna be out, gladly be a co-chair or. Uh, participate in some uh, some other way. I have no problem with that.
Okay. Uh, we'll go on to Hawaiian Affairs. So Koko Oahu, uh, would you like to be the chair?
Yeah, I take the chair.
Thank you, Koko Oahu. Appreciate that.
Can I can I ask you to Nani or Dana for be co-chair?
I wanted to go through the whole list, because we have seven, um, seven committees. And one person um, already had given us notice that they will not be here any longer. So we're. We're gonna go through. So Parks and Recreation, Ocean Safety, uh, Joe Jordan. Chair.
Yeah, yes, Chair. I will um, take on Parks and Recreation, mahalo.
Okay, and then Housing and Homelessness. Peterson, Chair. Nani Peterson, Chair. Okay, thank you, Nani, for that. And then Education, Health and Public Safety, Mr. Endo, would you like to chair that committee? Thank you. Appreciate that. And then Business Economic Development. Does anybody want to take on that position? Okay. Okay, so we'll pass that one by Business Economic Development. Uh, Natural Resources, Water and Land. Dana Newman, would you like to chair that committee, sir?
Sure.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Okay, so now we'll go back to, um. Co-chairs. So for Hawaiian Affairs, uh, Koko Oahu, did I say, I hear you say that you wanted Nani to.
For Dana, for Nani, for Dana.
Dana, would you like to co-chair that with uh, Koko Oahu? For Hawaiian Affairs? Thank you, Dana, for co-chairing Hawaiian Affairs. Uh, Parks and Recreation. Joe Jordan for Chair. Does anybody want to be a vice chair for that committee? Uncle Lanford. Okay, Uncle Lanford will do the co-chairing of Parks and Rec. Vice Chair, yeah. Um, Housing Ho- Homelessness. Chair Peterson, would you have any? Dana, would you like to take on the vice with Gina Peterson?
Sure.
For Housing and Homelessness? Okay, thank you, Dana. Appreciate that. And then for Education, Health and Public Safety, Mr. Endo, do you have anyone that you wanted to help assist with you?
Uh, I'll I'll be his vice chair.
Okay, thank you for that. Joe, appreciate it. And then so Natural Resources, Water and Land, does anybody want to co-chair that with Dana Newman? Okay. Mr. Lanford, thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Yep.
Chair.
Yes.
I I have a question. So like, being that um, a board member is no longer gonna be here, we have a vacancy.
So we need the official paperwork, though.
Yeah, yeah, no. So my question is, just because we we're gonna have that vacancy, that whoever's gonna come on and serve. Will also be part of, you know, being part of the comiques, the committees.
Yes. Yep. Um, Chair, seeing we don't have any offers for Business Economic Development Committee. And as far as my memory goes back, there has not been a meeting for this committee for about four years. So um, I would like to propose a motion to dissolve this particular committee at this point in time.
Can I ask a question first in regards to that committee? The committee times for meeting can be at any time of the day?
Dana, the committee chair makes that decision.
Okay, so I would like to put my name in for that committee.
Business Economic Development, Dana?
Yes.
Then I will rescind my motion. Thank you. Does anybody want to co-chair with um, Dana on the Business Economic Development? Oh, Uncle Lanford, you gonna take him on and help Dana? Yeah, okay. Mr. Lanford would like to assist you, Dana, with the Business Economic Development.
Oh, mahalo.
Okay, just a friendly reminder now. We need minutes gotta get done, because I actually have five people already lined up to do presentations. But they have to come through the committees. So there's people already lined up and waiting to see who's the committees. Because they want to come before the committees to uh, introduce their, you know, their, do their presentation and then come to the full board. Okay.
Since we do have some new board members and new committee chairs, I want to put on the record, um, it's. Um, please get, for board chairs, it is your responsibility fully for the the committee meetings. So it's your responsibility to get a location, get a time set up, get the permit situated. Um, to get a permit situated, you go through us, of course, so it's a lot easier to do a city facility. So if you want to use this space. Or if it's another city space, it's a lot easier for us to help you with the permitting. But we need, we give a three week notice to get that permit situated. So if you can get back to me the earlier you can, we can start get that permit in the works, so you can start having your committee meetings. So I wanted to make sure I put that on the record for you guys.
Thank you for that. Thank you all for participating and filling the seats. I appreciate it. Uh, now we're on the approval of minutes for July twenty twenty five.
Chair, I would like to make a motion to postpone the approval of the minutes for July first, twenty twenty five. Till next month, September's meeting.
Can I get a second? Mr. Endo. Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Next one, Community Concerns. Okay, sorry, voice vote for postponing the minutes for July first, twenty twenty five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know we're doing committees and then the minute.
So to answer that, um. I reviewed the minutes and there's many changes and it's gonna take a while to go through all the changes. I think the Neighborhood Commission changed the way they were doing the minutes and they use an A I system. And it just started in the last month, so there's a lot of corrections. So I figured. Let's down to the corrections and have a quicker motion next month. The A I doesn't recognize Ulalohava'i and other Polynesian names like mine's. It's Sabai, Sabiinaea, so yeah, that's not happening. Yeah. Okay, so minutes postponed. So now we're on Community Concerns. Um, so it's limited to two minutes. Please be specific, get to the question. Um, not long winded, because there's a lot of community concerns, because last two months, we haven't done concerns. Koko Oahu is Sergeant at Arms. He's gonna keep the minutes. This is the timer. And just don't forget to state your name just for the the minutes um, recording. Thank you.
Are you ready for me?
Go ahead.
Give me some time. That's that's not my paper. Just let you know, that's separate. Aloha, my Kako, Pikachu Shelby building here live for all of you. Just let you know, I will be at the City Council tomorrow. I won't see any of you. Every time I've been showing up, you guys are never there. I'm the only guy from Y N I there physically. So it's very sad to report all of you how much I feel it's a waste of my god freaking time. We have a bill on Capitol Hill for two hundred thirty million dollars for your shit, your kuka, your sewage bills on your treasury bonds. That'll be up there for tomorrow. Oh, no, 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 I'm not done. That's for the bill. We have bill forty six, bill four thirty seven. You guys never, you guys never show up. You guys don't come up to support. I got the police commissioners, meeting already going. Why are we stopping?
Eating, uh, call to order.
Welcome back. Pikachu Shelby building here live. So I'll be back at City Council ten o'clock sharp tomorrow for the bill about treasury bonds on your sewage. It's gonna be two hundred thirty million dollars. Answered the poll, has never answered my phone calls, not returned anything. We had Nahasta funds that you couldn't use anything for ten thousand minimum to unlimited amounts for your house, for cell phones, for. Whatever you wanted for Tesla, and nobody said anything, including. Uh, Colly Watson from D H L meeting, they wouldn't let me do a report. I helped Connie Healy Foundation write for a wall for seven hundred thirty nine thousand two hundred dollars. For their Homestead Association. The money they're rigging is going through Colly Watson's, not a Cooley Homestead Association. He did not put anything out for us. When you try to call Oriana through the website, we don't, we get denied. She hasn't even picked up my phone calls or emails this whole freaking time. And I'm the one who wrote for the application for the bills with um, people from that side right there by D H L. So I feel like we're getting screwed on the website, because nobody knows. My neighbors, people who live by me, nobody knew for the Nahasta funds. Now we have the police commissioners, which I'll be going to tomorrow at two o'clock. There's a lot of human trafficking, organ trafficking. We did a rescue on the Big Island, a sixty year old girl who's safely on Oahu. Guess how much you're selling kidneys for? Five hundred thousand dollars. Where's this place? Thirtieth Street, right by the fake fire station, H P P. Who's the perpetrator? Jason Davis, the U S Marshal, Jason Davis, with tattoos on the sleeves. I put my Facebook on Keke O'Kolani. Who's gonna do anything about this? I contacted the U S Marshals to complain about the U S Marshals. They're closed on Sunday, so I've been calling Monday, Tuesday, this morning, I sent it to the White House, I sent it to Donald Trump, I sent it to Honolulu Police Commission. And I want to see what they're gonna do about it, because I also contacted Doe, Mike Lambert, to see what they're gonna do, because that's all they got it. We already did the rescue, the job's done. How are you guys gonna help with human trafficking, drug smuggling, organ harvesting? When it's already going down in front of all of your faces, and that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm frustrated, to shovel us down in two minutes or less. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Online, we have Austin Salsido. Go ahead.
Can everyone, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this computer is kind of going switchy on me on this thing. Uh, okay. I have uh, concerns about the the Housing and Homeless Committee. I said, I strongly urge for this committee to convene not any day, but not on the third Tuesday of each month. Reason for it, we had brought it up to this uh, previous committee, because. Every third Tuesday of the month is a non-acute neighborhood board, because we are the nine six seven nine two. We all have interest in the nine six seven nine two. So Dana and Nani, please do not. Put your schedule, your meeting, and your agendas on the third Tuesday of the month. Everybody's concerned about the nine six seven nine two. Secondly. The Parks and Recreation and Ocean Safety. I have strong opposition and protest of having our Joe Jordan as. The Chair for Parks and Recreation for K O's. Any other parks do not touch K O's. Because in the past, we had disrespectful by Joe Jordan, had caused conflict and disrespected our volunteers out there. And if she is not the head of the project. She do not collaborate or be transparency with the volunteers. Uncle Hank is a is a watchful eye and a adoptive park volunteer for the east side. I am on the west side, protectors of paradise handles adoptive park on the non-developed side. So I am strong opposition and protest on that. It was all past experience.
I'm listening. My apologies to to interrupt you. The same the same comment. That I made earlier still follows with order and decorum, and that follows in in line with the comments that you're making. We need to make sure that we're. Even if you do have conflicting views, there are rules that we have to follow, which involves respecting elected officials, other members of the public and board members. And comments like that are are.
I respect what Jeff, I respect what you said, but committees involving a Joe Jordan, F bombs, there was no decorum. The neighborhood park commissioners is a joke. They're a dog and pony show. Okay, I had bad experiences, slandering, F bombs thrown in the meeting, nobody called B S or decorum. So there is double standards here. Okay?
Uncle Austin, I I do understand, but again, for for the sake of this meeting, there's order and decorum that we have to follow. So and and making comments like that. That is not something that we need to be doing at this at this board meeting.
Well, I strongly urge for uh, for that chair not to touch even K O Beach Park, because we have volunteers that she couldn't work with. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle Austin.
Go ahead. Anyone in person, come to the mic, state your name, please.
Guys, have a. Thank you so much. Aloha, I am Love. I'm a concerned citizen. My concern is over. H B four two seven, which was signed into law June twenty seventh. Becoming Act two three six officially titled an act relating to biosecurity. Act two three six renames the Department of Agriculture to the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity and establishes a deputy chairperson for biosecurity. This position has broad powers to declare a biosecurity emergency and takes sweeping actions, including entering private property. Restricting movements of goods and people, the controversial position provisions and why they could lead to tyranny. One is broad biosecurity emergencies without any oversight. Act two thirty six grants Governor Deputy Chairperson unilateral authority to declare emergencies. Without any judicial review or legislative approval, this could be invoked for a wide range of situations, even beyond general biosecurity threats. Like coconut rhinoceros beetle, like a resurgence of. This could be invoked for a wide range of situations, even beyond general biosecurity threats like coconut rhinoceros beetle, like a resurgence of COVID or any other virus. Okay, warrantless entries into property, private property is a concern. Control over the movement and resources is a concern. There's constitutional conflicts with the Fourth Amendment, unreasonable searches and seizure. Fifth Amendment takings clause, 14th Amendment due process. And we have to realize that once accepted as standard governance, these powers are rarely if ever rolled back. So Act 236 could become a tool for long-term government overreach. Okay? Stay informed, my friends. We must not surrender our God-given constitutional rights to this. I don't know how this happened right under our noses, but this is not freedom. It is communism and we must put a stop to it. Contact, please contact your politicians, stand up, speak out, hit your knees and pray, do whatever you gotta do, but act now before they are breaking down your door to take what is yours. God bless you, everyone. Mahalo and let's fight this. We're stronger united.
Thank you.
Yeah, aloha. Congratulations to all our new members. Thank you so much, mahalo for running. My name is Blanca, Blanca Larson, and I'm just here to support Love's testimony. Because I wanted you to know and the audience to know that is a little help out there is hope. There's a group called Stand for Hawaii, Stand Together for Hawaii. They are trying to see what we can do. Because it might be something that we all can do together because this bill, 427, violates our rights, our constitution. I don't want to take too long because we have a lot of speakers, but please research 427, go read it. You're not gonna see any warnings in there unless you see the biosecurity. Okay, read the biosecurity, the title, but the description of the bill doesn't tell you anything. So the trick isn't the, or the magic or whatever they're trying to hide is in the biosecurity, the name.
Aloha and mahalo and thank you again for running. Thank you. Online, we have Kalei Salsito. Go ahead, Kalei.
Aloha. Um, I just wanted to share, you know, the previous committee on the parks and housing. There gotta be more transparency, yeah? You know, they gotta more transparency because what we had volunteers at the Ka'au. I mean, the chair at that time was so ambitious. She's a very ambitious person. When you get volunteers, you work together with them. You do not look down upon them. You do not look above. You look equal into their eyes. That's the part, that's the problems the kopunas there has. They're so frustrated with how things have been run. Communication is very important. And the other thing that's, we want to bring it to Jeff Jones and also to you, Chair. When you board members become a board members, stop putting Instagram and slandering people. When we're fighting, stop slandering people that's been volunteers when their kids was a baby. Stop slandering people and turning Hawaiians against Hawaiians. We are here for the safety and justification that we are fighting for. For the kopunas, we are not a leader. We are a voice for those kopunas that never had a voice for the longest time. So work together or step aside because do not silent them. Not because of their age. So I'm telling you folks, not because of their age. They're nobody. They are somebody. They are ones of teachers and have respect for them. So do not misuse your community power of authority. And do not use social media for downgrade anybody or badmouth anyone. If you are barred, be professional about it. Communicate. Don't think you're above the law. You're there to serve your community. Listen to them. Listen to the resident. We suffer so much on our side. When are we gonna come together? We all start turning each other against each other. That's the problem. Thank you. Enough is enough. Come on. We gotta work together for the best for our community. Mahalo and residents.
Thank you. Auntie Jan Makepa, go ahead.
Aloha, Jan Makepa with the YNI Valley Homestead Community Association. I wanna just mahalo the commission for the establishment of all the chairs and co-chairs for all of the komike. I was saddened to hear that Kalei was no longer a part of the board. We've been working with him and with Parks and Recreation regarding Kaukuni Park in our YNI Valley Homestead. But I do look forward to working with the Parks and Recreation komike to continue to hold them more with the next phase of our playground for Kaukuni Park. Kaukuni Park has been without a playground for the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years. And we're so close and we continue to move forward. So I wanna thank you for, you know, having the Parks and Rec komike so that we can continue to, to work with them. And then also to just say that City and County in taking over the general lease from DHHL for Kaukuni Park. They're doing a great job in responding to our concerns, whether it's about the broken sprinklers, light replacement, suggestions of a gate on the elevated side of the park. But you know, it's not, it's not so much of a concern, but it's just more of a mahalo as we move forward and getting the playground for our park. So mahalo.
Thank you, Auntie Jan. Come, sit forth.
Good evening, board. Good evening, community. My name is Kimberly Haupu and I'm a member of the YNI Moku Kopuna Council. I have a concern this evening. Many of you know Blanche McMillan and her work with Hui Mahe'aaina in Waimea Nalo. And we invited her down to YNI to work with us, anybody here to help our homeless and our houses get off the beach. My question is, I was, well, I've heard that our elected officials do not want her here in our community. That's my concern and I'm gonna leave that to the board to find an answer. Thank you. My name is Kimberly Haupu.
Anybody else in person?
Aloha again. My name is Carlo Tanwakyo. I have a sort of a unique view on Makaha Valley from literally my home. And when I say view, I just wanted to make it clear that there is construction happening. And from what I understand, after reviewing with attorneys and submitting a complaint, that there is, there are no permits for that development. And so I have video footage, tons of photos, and actually pulled, we pulled the permit. So if anybody from the community wants to see those permit, see those, that permit and understand what's happening, I have photos too. I can share with you. I also wanted to mention that the development is specifically for 105 resort short-term rentals. So there are, from speaking with different community members, they're under the, some of them are under the impression of different kinds of things. But I have, I literally have a map of their planned development here. So if anybody wants a copy of this, I'm happy to share it. And if anybody wants photos or videos of the construction happening, dust flying everywhere, happy to show those as well. Thank you.
Chair, can I make a question? Continue with his, hang on, all to his information and stuff as we form a committee. He can bring it to the committee and we can form, we can formulate a crew, a crew to, you know, address the situation that he has. And that way we can have all the records in order and we can find the right place to go to so we can actually get some kind of help or somebody to come and help us, please.
If I may also add, Dawn Kapuna, her signature is on the approval of these permits. And so that's who I filed the complaint with. So I just wanted to make sure, it was last week that we filed the, the report with videos and things. So I just want to see, if I remember correctly, she was in attendance. So maybe get an update on that complaint that was submitted. I'm in Manaolu Estates and some of the neighbors want the development, some don't. I particularly, for many reasons, I'm not interested in a foreign developer KH Holdings. So I encourage everybody to look up what's, what KH Holdings is and what's happening in South Korea with KH Holdings. And you all can decide what, how that is going for them. And I'm not sure that we want that type of organization having such a large landholding, a foreign land developer in Makaha Valley.
Hi Chair, if I could ask that he share his contacts so I can, this is Dana.
We're retrieving that information right now. Is there anybody, anyone else in person that would like to come, just state your name?
Aloha, my kako, obao kameino hauia baba o Hainai. I'd like to bring the attention to the board.
Start the timer again. Go ahead.
Aloha, my kako, obao kameino hauia baba o Hainai. I'd like to bring to the board's attention Kaukona Hua Ranch. Might think it doesn't apply to us. It's an entity that's gonna be building or constructing on the other side of our mountain. The issue with that is it's a tourist venture. It's supposed to be an ag, but they're not. Because it's on the other side of the mountain, we think it doesn't apply to us. But our au'aua goes over this mountain. Encounters Schofield barracks, encompasses wahihua, East Range Training Center, which I've been on this 12 years training there. And then goes right up to Ko'ala's. That entity is just outside of our au'aua, but it should be a concern to us too. Because if we allow them to build a tram to take them halfway up our mountain and then they're gonna build trails to go up to Ka'ala. They have choke people up there. So I think this board should get together and support the other three boards that are trying to stop them. Mahalo, you know?
Hello, Peter Mulder from, um, so today I was heading home and I noticed a bunch of smoke coming from the golf course. The one that's building or whatever they're doing over there. It wasn't smoke, it was dust and it was just blowing down the whole valley. I was kind of wondering why our house gets so dusty. But anyway, they have big rolls of carpet everywhere up there. I don't think that's legal. Concerned about the mountain and the water precipitation, it's all connected. They taught us in like second grade. Like it's all connected, yeah? There's plenty of water, but the water, water supply is taking the water down the aquifer. The aquifer sucks it down and then they use it for building homes. It's not for, it's not for ag no more. I'm just gonna set this straight. Not for ag no more. Okay, so and then this whole thing is like, hey, we're not part of the plan. You know, you know, we're not part of the plan. So you know, like our governor's making plans without us. This whole thing that you guys are talking about, this ecological thing, they make fancy names, they make it sound good, like the patriot, patriot, you know? Us, just invasion of privacy. They can kill you legally now without having any kind of asshole cop come. They can just drone you and say, oh, he was a homegrown terrorist. So like, I mean, it's the big picture, yeah? It's the big picture. Where are we going? Like, we gotta boot together as a community. And, you know, I don't know what's going on. We get foreign investors mingling with our politicians, like, you know? Everybody's pockets are getting fat, but the people are getting poorer. And, you know, I was born and raised Waikiki. I'm not ashamed to tell anybody that. Why do you think I live YNI? I can't leave my dad's legacy. We're getting pushed away. Most of the people are getting pushed off the island. So we, we gotta Hui together and we gotta fight for, you know, what's right. Aloha. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person?
I'm here because several things. First is the public safety power shut off. You know, we are in that, our whole moku. Now, we're gonna be living pretty much in this. But do we have a community group that is more specific to, you know, are they, if the fire is in Makaha, are they gonna shut it off only in Makaha? Or is it gonna extend to out here? I mean, how specific are they gonna be doing the shut off? And so do we have a community group that's gonna be working with Hiko to ensure that it doesn't shut us all off, which I hope it doesn't? But they tag us all the same way. We're all Hainai. So is it gonna be all of 962 gets shut off in Nana Kuli when Makaha's burning or vice versa? And then I also wanted to support what Ka'ili was saying about the development on Ka'ala, Mount Ka'ala. So perhaps our Hawaiian affairs or our land and water committees can work with them on that. And I also wanted to share what Brother was talking about. The more acts and the more positions that they create, it takes away our rights, our privacy rights. So some we gave it up, you know, because of 9/11 and the supposed threat. I mean, there's always a threat on America. Look at what America does. It's not a wonder, right? So there's always a threat, but there are certain activities that are created to cause a need to have more control over us. So we need to kind of make all of that and to be careful. And thank you so much for going out, even if you are the only one that represents us because you're akamai to know about those things. So thank you folks for serving and I hope we fill up the board. Mahalo.
Hi you guys. Aloha, I'm Lina. So a couple of my community concerns. One of them is with the Kopuna Council. We were really active working with the governor's office, identifying state lands where we could build Ka'ale for Kopuna. There was a lot of roadblocks that came up and recently we just found out that some of our elected officials are trying to take that property and use it for another nonprofit. So I went and looked at the land, what was happening. And there was dirt that was dropped because the house that they knocked down, there's a basement. And so they filled the basement with dirt, but in that dirt, there was broken glass, there was vapes, broken vapes. There was golf balls and the dirt was just like Nazi. So where the land stays, you know, Holy Hala Zaya, the church, that land right next, right before the canal. So that falls in the other district technically. But it was said that some of the representatives on this side were working with other nonprofits to take that land away. And they knew, they know that we were, you know, working over a year trying to come up with solutions. Another thing I wanted to bring up was what Gina Salsito had said about listening to Kopuna. And that for me, I am the voice. I am the Kopuna Council. I step in, I volunteer my time twice a month to go and listen and sit with kopunas to hear their concerns. Because we realize neighborhood boards' hands get tied, elected officials' hands get tied. And so if we can find a way to navigate and find solutions, that's what we're doing. It is also brought to our attention that our elected officials does not represent, does not recognize the Kopuna Council as an advisory. It is also brought to our attention that um, our elected officials does not represent, um, does not recognize the Kupuna Council as an advisory committee. I brought in a resolution that was passed in 2022, recognizing the Wainai Moko Kupuna Council as advisory. Mahalo.
Any other community member in person? Thank you.
He'elani'au. Wainai. Um, on Wai' board. I come here with deep concerns. Because many of our mo'olelo has been changing. The first concern is the name of the Temple Epo'kai'i at the Marai is Kanili. Our Tupuna, my family, still live in that area that we've been taking care of that temple for generations. Kalakui'ili'oloa, that's a kau'u name. It's not Wainai. So my main concern is that we have to return the correct name to. Is that there is a lot of Iri Tupuna. Our tutus are being exposed because of the tide. These king tides are now exposing uh, in the area called La La Walu. And Al'au, uh, Al'au Uka. That's by Surfside. And we've been working with HPD, but they're dysfunctional because they not using the monies, or there is no monies to take care of our Tupuna. And so we are doing it, our organization is doing it with the archaeologists. So we need your folks' help in protecting these sites. The third part is that in our community, we're changing names such as um, Ma'ili. It was always Ma'ili, and now we say Ma'ili because of one person in a dictionary changed it. So my main concern is that we have to take better care. And it's not just one group that's gonna dictate to this board, but I want the board, like in the old days, that we were in control and getting the information out, getting the information out and in. So I ask this board to be strong. You know, I love you because we've done a lot. Mahalo. Aloha.
Thank you. Come up to the mic.
Aloha, board. My name is Blessing Star Dela Cruz. I'm coming in front of you guys as Ko'ava'i Paina. I wanna ask for your help. Um, the reason why I'm asking for your help is past couple two months, I've watched Board of Water Supply turning off and on um, residents, young Ohana's family water. I've asked them maybe two or three times to um, work with Ohana's and uh, Kupunas to see some kind of life uh, savers like I did with the Hawaiian Electric. I also, also did with the cellphone and internet for Kupunas and also for um, you know, our families that need that help. And I'm asking your board members to assist me asking Hawaiian um, Board of Water Supply to have that also for the water as by, as a lifesaver source for our community and our people. That's one. Number two, I was short on coming in on HPD and I missed a portion where he mentioned um, dehumanizing uh, HPD. Um, I wanted to put in my two cents there, but it wasn't called for. There is a legality portion that the community and the people need to understand that HPD is for the community. HPD is uh, city and county. But I wanted to bring up the issue of the tsunami, because I was one that was also out there uh, evacuating. And what was brought up with our community was that listening to HPD. Um, my question in the state and the city and county is, why wasn't the sheriff or the marshals activated other than HPD? Because HPD is for us. Right? Okay, and then, number three, Ko'ava'i Paina, we are having a meeting Friday, 12 noon, Okeby. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter from Aka. Um, it was brought to my attention that the uh, the Wainai Dump Road at night gets a lot of dumping. Illegal dumping. And that it's probably from the inefficiencies, because I, I heard that they went from private to, you know, city and county to take care of the, the dumpsters. So things are building up, people are getting irritated. So that's for the gentleman in the back. Another one is uh, by Ranch, the surf spot. The road is getting undermined. It's already under the road. I don't know if you guys know, they put the barriers there. They put the Jersey barriers there. Ranch. Yes. Yeah. And then um, the uh, the water thing, uh, it's a big one. The water thing, just want everybody to remember the water thing, yeah? Because if they release the water, it'll spawn the fish on the beach. It'll bring the rain. It'll bring the aloha back. Aloha.
Aloha, Michael Willem Capolino Eli. Uh, my concern is that guy, because of, I think just, yeah, I believe, the other guy, what is he, Ahmad? Okay, I heard that he's gonna go make, like, when he do, I heard like something, he's gonna sell water. Like a Wainai spring water or whatever. That's what I heard. I mean, that's his say, but I'm just bringing it out. Cause you can make money, you can make money, for real, because you dig that well. I don't know if he dig them all into sea level or whatever. Once they hit water, that, yeah, he, all you do is pump, pump. And he don't need to turn them on yet, but when he turn them on, what he got? Water. And then, what about my car? You know what I said about car? You should make a more Hawaiian homestead, because they're selling $30,000 on acre. So now these Koreans didn't buy them. Yeah, so now they stay over there operating illegal, illegal operations or whatever. I already thought you guys couldn't make more Hawaiian homestead or whatever. Makana more Hawaiian homestead. And that land is um, Abner Paki. Yeah, so that's the guy that who owns it, you know what I mean? So that's, you should deem the Hawaiian homestead that, if you let it become Hawaiian homestead. Or you make one, one um, for old people, uh, what they call those group homes and stuff like, not homes, but um, you know, like how they get the doctors down over there, but up Jade Street, nursing home. Care home, nursing home for the Kupunas, and they're just a killer view. Boy, you know what I mean, eh? Up in Makai and plus to the tsunami. So everybody who's up Ke'ili Drive, I was tripping, I have to come all the way around. And I never have room, so I have to come down Ke'ili Drive, little bit past the where the thing says the tsunami. I was past the sign a little bit, but I never care. If the thing will come, bring them. Cause I can run a little bit more up the road, oh, sorry. But then, and the Board of Water Supply, they're gonna fix that.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, turn on the water and then fix that road. The Me'itali's Road by the roses. And then, like what he said, the ski resort, not ski resort, but that's, that's our apua. Like you said, this is Wainai Uka. This is Wainai Kai. So the, the birthstone is connected to us too. You know what I mean? The thing is, the whole apua go all the way to Wahe'ua. And then plus two, you know what I, I see, you know, when they're showering, when they're showering at the beaches, okay, they washing water. They're over here taking like five minutes, but just wash yourselves. They gotta know where the water come from and how long the thing take. Take 50 years for the thing go down and go to a aquifer. That's what they gotta know, all the people, everybody. They gotta learn now. You know what I'm saying? Cause bruh, not gonna have water, what we gonna do? We gonna suck salt water and make them into fresh water, and that's a good idea. But aloha.
Thank you. Anybody else in person? Nope. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is Congresswoman Jill Tocura. Okay. Next one is Governor Josh Green's representative. Diamond, you're muted. If you can unmute.
Hi, yes, one second. Okay, aloha, mai'kako, Diamond Badajos here, Information and Community Relations Officer at the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Um, here on behalf of Governor Josh Green's office. Um, two things that were sent out is the um, Governor's E-Newsletter and LG's E-Newsletter, so that was shared with the board. Um, I don't have any follow-ups from last month or any questions emailed to me. So I am here to take anything new either from the board or the community. Mahalo.
Anybody in person has any questions? For the Governor's rep?
I, I get.
Okay, go ahead, Kako Ohu.
Hey, Kaymana, um, so is this, aloha, it was just brought to my attention tonight on Act 236 HB 427. Um, do you know who was the um, author of that bill?
I do not, but I will follow up. So HB 247, what was the act number?
236.
236.
Hawaii biosecurity law. Thank you, if you can give that.
Thank you, yes.
Aloha, Pikachu Shelby billionaire. Hi, yes, I wanted to report the organ harvesting on the Big Island. And I already reported to the US Marshals, because the perpetrator is a US Marshal named Jason Davis, who lives on 30th Street. This has to go up the chain of command. And I already reported to Hono Police Commission. So can the governor help us support the people on the Big Island? I'm not sure what you can do, but can you report it up the chain of command, right? Thank you.
Yep, noted, thank you.
And then online we have Dana. Dana, go ahead.
Aloha, Diamond. Um, my question is in regards to a project within the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. I just want to find out what is the status on the program with regards to the use of unmanaged vacant lands in the department being utilized by individuals who are experiencing low to very low income thresholds that would not qualify for traditional financing. Um, what is the status on this, the implementation of a process moving forward? Yeah, updates to Mr. Manole's project that he is in? Um, if you have anything to share?
Sure. At this time, I do know that Mr. Manole's project is a pilot, and I do know that the um, permitted interaction group will be meeting on this matter shortly. I've noted to myself yet to bring back those notes to the board.
Chair, I have another question for Kaymana.
Go ahead.
Um, Kaymana, I have a, I have a question, like this is a, um, I don't know if it's still an ongoing investigation on um, this prop, property in Mapunapuna where it's an industrial inventory for DHHL where a good friend of mine's son was murdered and was found on the property. Um, and I know the feds and HPD, um, they're called there multiple times and they actually had a raid on this person. And so, um, this guy is just really not a good person and just, um, if you've been there, we've been there and there's so much um, activity going on, whether it's illegal or not. But it's, it's a, it's a gathering place for a lot of bad things happening. So, on behalf of my good friend who lost his son there, um, I just wanted, I wanted to know, um, if the department, what is the latest that um, the department is doing about uh, getting this, this person who, no more cocoa, but he has the, he was leasing, but he, you know, he wasn't paying his lease and all that. So I'm pretty sure that the department knows about this. But um, if, if there's any way that you can bring back some clarity or some updates for us, we'd really appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, the department isn't the lead on this investigation, and unfortunately, we can't comment on anything pending. Um, but if there is something, I can again, report that back.
So, Kaymana, so like, in Mapunapuna, right, that's, that's industrial um, inventory for DHHL. So it is, to my understanding, that any, any person, I mean, other than a best beneficiary of 50% or more can, can lease out, because this person that was leasing, he, he doesn't have any cocoa. So it is to believe that on the industrial inventory that anyone, anyone, um, any ethnicity can apply for a lease, an industrial lease.
I would need to check up on that with our land management division for clarity. Um, but yeah, at this point, I do know that we are cooperating with state and federal law enforcement to sort this out.
Thank you.
Anybody else in person?
Aloha, Ova'ukapuakili, aloha, Diamond, or Kaymana. Um, you know, the new website looks great, so I know you and Michael folks are doing a great job. But um, regarding what Pikachu had said earlier about a couple hundred million dollars from Nahazda. And can you elaborate on what he was talking about that hasn't been shared out with us? Because I'm one of them. Even though I attend the meetings, I know that we're spending Nahazda money on new homes and some improvements, but that seems to be very limited. But what it sounded like, according to Pikachu here, is that there is a bunch of money, and he shared this with me uh, Saturday. So I had all of a, a day and a half to try and figure out how I could try and get something, because he did say Monday was a deadline. But could you elaborate on uh, the Nahazda? And maybe Pikachu can um, share if you don't know what he was talking about. Thank you.
Okay, we have Dana online. Dana, go ahead.
Sorry, Diamond, I have another question in regards to, again, the constitutional responsibility of the state of Hawaii to protect the interests of water, um, water rights to homestead communities. Um, on the other hand, I would, that interest, like, how is the department greening our homesteads on the coastline? Um, what kind of mitigations are we doing in terms of like, trying to build capacity to increase water production within our community?
That's something I'll look into. Thank you.
Anybody else in person? Okay.
Yeah.
Kaymana, babe, you got locked up. So did you have a response for me? Like, maybe you'd be coming back next month, or were you gonna share tonight?
Uh, for the Nahazda funds, um, I know Pikachu had mentioned an X amount for home renovation, I believe it was.
So, aloha, mai'kako. So this is on the DHHL.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, it's on the DHHL website. So the solicitation came out, because I'm not a DHHL beneficiary, just to let you all know. But the email went out on July 16th from Orianna. You get to submit everything you wanted by July 28th. They had two portions, one for individual. You can go on the website right now for dhhlhawaii.gov. It'll say Nahazda, N-A-H-S-D-A, Native American Hawaiian Self, um, the Development Act, you're supposed to be able to Self-Determination Act. Now, the current stuff, because we tried to give a presentation to DHHL meeting, we weren't allowed to, because we were on the agenda. On August 18th, they're supposed to make a decision on DHHL and not our end. If you submitted your paperwork for your association, the minimum was 10 grand, there is no a sky limit. So every DHHL beneficiary could have had solar, Tesla walls, fencing, anything infrastructure, everyone is available for us. On ni'ihau, molokai, kauai, hilo for water catchment. Every single beneficiary is entitled to this money. If you don't spend the money annually, Kali Watson, DHHL is blowing it on his Nana'kuli Homestead Association and asking for a 30-year refinance on the project. So if you guys are running the association, it's different from an individual. This is the real estate game we're running, but if you don't apply for the money, you don't get squat. You shame, you starve, and I don't even qualify for myself. The final thing, it has to go through the government, Governor Josh Green's administrative package September 15th. So even if we all apply, they might just say no. But it was free to apply online as the beneficiary, and when we did it, and when we did it with Uncle Randy, I thought to be, you know, fully transparent, he was done in two to five minutes. He asked how much money, it was $739,200 for a wall. I couldn't put any pictures, I couldn't put any numbers, it was a small little thing, please see attachment. And that was it, we were done. It's sad how fast it was, but it's not really proper in my books. If I asked the military for that kind of money, they'd expect a full goddamn EIS and plus. You feel me? So it's kind of strange, but I wish they were more straightforward to everyone who actually is a real DHHL beneficiary. Because you guys could use it for garage, infrastructure, whatever you want, it comes out every year. We talk to the people in the mainland, they have casinos that they're running, but they just own the casinos and they hire the Anglo-Saxons to actually run it on the gaming commissions. And I encourage other things like that for our community to thrive, survive using our cultural diversity, our olela hawai, plus all of our culture, not just Hawaiian, Chinese, Japanese, Filipino, the malasadas, the lumpia, that's really good with the lao lao, chihu, yahui.
Okay, do we have anyone else in person? Okay, we're gonna go to State Senator Samantha Decourt.
Aloha Chair, Board members, Samantha Decourt here. A few announcements, I will be having my town hall next week, this coming Tuesday. I don't know what day it is, this coming Tuesday, August 12, 6:00 PM, Ark of Safety. Please come, we will be having a few guest speakers, myself, Senator Brenton Awah, who is the minority, Senate Minority Leader, Senator Tim Richards, who is the Chair of Hawaiian Affairs in the Legislature, also Department of Transportation Director Ed Sniffin and Department of Law Enforcement Director Michael Lambert. We will be also having in the, in the audience, ready to answer questions, Department of Education, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Department of Agriculture and Haimea. So I definitely encourage you guys to come. Olelo will be live streaming it, we are gonna have a quick, maybe a 20-minute introduction on the projects that are taking place here. Department of Transportation is doing a lot of work here, they have a lot of real-time opening happening this year. Palakera Road is scheduled to open in September and so on and so forth. So I want Ed to be able to give those kinds of updates. Also Department of Law Enforcement is mobilizing a lot of their resources and manpower here on the Wainai coast. We had a meeting with the ranchers up in Kea'ao, I believe it was last month. So they do have literal boots on the ground here in Wainai. So this is the state's effort to bring enforcement and to also be an extra addition to the county's police department. The tsunami evacuation, we were able to coordinate with Department of Transportation and HPD. First things first, open up all the access roads while people were coming home, even though it barely seemed like it did anything because people were still backed up going in and out of Wainai. But the fact that they were able to mobilize and move quickly, oh shucks, time, was really good. So, sorry, yeah. Department of Transportation, a really quick Kole Kole Pass in collaboration with DOT and with the Army, opened up Kole Kole Pass, we had about 400 vehicles go through, so that seemed to go smoothly. I talked to both drivers and the Army and DOT, it was a good pass-through over there. The Army is gonna be scheduling a more open for civilians to come and do a test drive through Kole Kole Pass next year, probably around March, April-ish. As soon as I know that, I'll definitely let the board know. We can all bring our cars and see how we're gonna be able to mobilize in that way. I apologize for Farrington Highway not being opened up to let people back into Wainai. That was a super big congestion. You had pretty much all the elected officials screaming at Department of Emergency Management, like do it now, now, now! So we wish we could have gotten it open sooner, but I'm believing that the next time around will be better. I did meet with the state fire marshal, just so you guys know, she's new, it's a new department, she's newly appointed. But I do plan on bringing her down here to Wainai to visit all of the, well, I mean, the entire coast is in a threat, vulnerable area. But to bring her down here so that she sees that both of our Nanakuli locations and our Wainai HFD locations, you know, they know how to handle Wainai fires. They're from here, they do it here, they know how to manage and how to put it out. I will say, because we're still in a very vulnerable spot for fires right now, please, if we can get the message out for private owners to remove their fuel loads, clean up around their houses, try to remove anything flammable that will continue to keep burning over and over again. And then my final thing, I'll just mention with the gondola. The north side of the island did have a bunch of neighborhood boards that collaborated to stand in opposition of the gondola. My office was there and we have made a visible opposition for this gondola for many, many reasons, the permitting, the traffic, transportation, the roads are not ready for it. But then also, I mean, first and foremost, that this is ag property and they're not agging. This was meant, this, this, this gondola project is primarily for tourism. There's nothing at all to do with agging. If we let these in, then the floodgates of everybody else who wants to do these gondola things are gonna continue to come in. So we stand in opposition, actually, when we went up to Washington DC, we met with the Department of Transportation to let them know that this is what they were doing and Department of Transportation on the federal level is looking into this gondola. And they're not happy about this either, so with that, I'll just end and take questions for now. So since the committees were just formed, I do want to encourage Chair Dana of the Water and Land, if you guys can really hui together and create maybe some kind of reso, if this is what the board desires to stand in opposition of the gondola, I think that the more of our neighborhood boards collaborate together because this will affect Wainai, because it does affect Ka'ala. So I'll just say that and take questions, so sorry for the time.
Anybody in person? Questions for the Senator? Come, come to the mic, Tita.
Islina again, I just wanted to get an update of what was shared in Washington about Makua.
Yeah, so we met with the Department of Defense, Second-in-Command Secretary Honorable Dale Marks and they have had their team, even though in Washington, have also been working on Makua for years and years and years now. So basically, our meeting consisted of, number one, the cleanup. It's very important that we get in front of the cleanup right away. Otherwise, we're gonna have another repeat of Kohol A'ave, it was just a disaster, yet $400 million was spent towards just a poor job. So number one, that, number two, is making sure that when they do have those discussions with the cleanup, that we have our people here at the table, that these are not people, you know, up in an executive level making these decisions for us and making sure that we're here at the table. But also, this will be a very long, lengthy job, probably a lifetime job. And I'm pitching to the federal level to make sure that they employ our people here on the Wainai coast to make sure we stimulate the economy and secure jobs for our side. So they're very excited to work with us, they're excited to be able to collaborate and they don't want to make the same mistake that they did in Kohol A'ave, knowing that that was a disastrous failed attempt on the Army's part. And I will say the technology with the cleanup for Makua is like from like stone ages ago. They're still trying to use metal detectors to detect unordained bombs. So we have a long way to go and I have met with some of the people that are, that have newer technology. We just knew, I mean, we have cars that drive itself. So we gotta have better technology to identify these bombs, so go ahead.
I have a question, eh, Senator? Nice to see you again. So regarding Makua, was there any conversations about the returning of the lease? Because the lease is up in 2029.
Yeah, so the plan, the plan is, the Army is still planning on allowing the lease to lapse in 2029. So that is the plan first, yeah, on everybody that I talked to. Even when I went federally, they were even under the impression that yes, it will lapse. They haven't had live fire, live fire shooting there for over 25 years. So they don't need it, they gotta give it back. And I will say that, just to be clear, that this is the state leased land, right? So there's about 8,000-ish, seven, yeah, 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 close to 8,000-ish acres. So that is the state-owned land. But I will say that, that everybody is on the same page as far as the lease lapsing in Makua in 2029. So we're making sure that we get in front of it before they start issuing out all the contracts, making all their plans and not letting us weigh in on it.
Mahalo Senator, just a humble suggestion, because Malama Makua has been a part of the movement for such a long time. Further going for any kind of conversation, they should be at the forefront, at the table with you folks, talking about what the needs are for Makua as far as the technology used to remove these UXOs. Conversation with Uncle Kanai is super important because he's already made connections with university to actually get that ball rolling. And so having that open discussion with those at the forefront of Malama Makua is super important.
Yeah, absolutely. Once we get a little further into the process, then we'll be able to kind of, you know, bring those entities in. But you know, Malama Makua has been strong advocates, they're the frontrunners on this thing and if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't even be here at this point. So I definitely want to make sure that they get 100% of the credit for it being long-lasting and being able to advocate for this movement to happen. But they're talking to the same people I'm talking to. So I think the more people that are saying the same thing from different tables is all going to align into the goal of getting Makua back, so that's the goal.
I, I, I hear that. I think that if we are able to sit as one whole and talk, then we don't have to repeat ourselves in conversations that already had been had, yeah.
I agree, I agree, thank you. And I'll also have the Water and, suggest that the Water and Land also bring it up on their agenda as well. But absolutely, I agree, 1,000%, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you Senator.
I too would also make sure that you're speaking to hui Malama Makua as well. They brought the lawsuit against the
That's right, thank you.
US Army.
Thank you.
As well as community members. So if you could go back and look in the archives when Senator Colleen Hanabusa was our Senator, she introduced a measure that would bring community to the table, practitioners to the table, the US Army and the state, all to have a vivid discussion regarding the return of Makua and how that would happen. So unfortunately, it wasn't passed during her tenure and it wasn't passed during my tenure either because of the political jury-mandaring in the Square Building, unfortunately. But maybe you can revise and look at that possibility again, since now we're closer to 2029. And we must never forget, because Makua as well as Kohol A'ave were supposed to come back simultaneously. And the agreement with the warriors back then decided to move forward with Kohol A'ave and said we will come back for Makua. No disrespect, but we've been waiting quite some time for that. So we all must come together, not only 96792, but the entire Lahui and the islands, unfortunately. Secondly, the US Army does own some fee simple property within that valley. Not a lot, some acres. And I would like to know how they're going to address that because it's surrounded by the public trust lands that may come back in 2029, thank you.
I agree, those were the same concerns that I expressed, also roadway access to those lands that are to be returned as well. But thank you for mentioning the legislation. I am already in discussions with my colleagues. Makua was the number one reason why I asked to be on the Water and Land Committee. And so I've already been discussing this with the Chair and with my other colleagues, just to make sure that we get this stuff like concrete in legislation to make sure that everybody's accountable.
Okay, so we have Johnny May online, go ahead Johnny May.
Thank you Chair, this is Johnny May, thank you Senator. Well-coordinated regarding the tsunami alert. Number one, the fire marshal in my community is not so much the overgrowth, but is people that have vehicles on their property and derelict cars on the road is an issue. The water, the PFAS can be removed from our water. And lastly, Pukai Bay and Uluvehi and Maipola, there's a huge issue on the sand backing up. What, Pukai Bay especially, which is $1 million, I believe, that was allotted by the previous Senator. Pukai Bay is becoming more of a sandbar than water. So if the issues on the sand that's clogging the canals, the two canals and Pukai Bay, that would help improve the usage of Pukai Bay. Thank you Senator for your assistance.
Thank you, I will respond with regards to Pukai Bay because I did just talk to Dobar about that and they were supposed to have a community meeting, I think, within the next month or so. So let me follow up with that, because they're supposed to engage with community before continuing to make more plans. So I'll follow up with that. And with the canal, I'll go ahead and maybe County can respond on that. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your other things, but I'll email the Chair and she can get it.
The fire, the fire, my area in my subdivision is not so much the overbrush. It's people that are working on cars on their, on their property and their derelict cars that are clogging the roads. That's the issue in my community, where people should remove their cars, but it's derelict cars that's on public land, on public property that's what is clogging the escape route, should there be a fire in my community? That's the issue.
Thank you, I do just want to applaud Wainai Valley Homestead. I think it really is gonna be an effort of just managing a plan within your ahupua'a because it's gonna be hard for us to do a generic plan throughout the whole Wainai coast because it just depends on a few things. It depends on where the fire starts, it depends on where the wind is blowing, it depends if you gotta go down Mauka or Makai, like all of these things really matter. But what I will say is when we experienced the Miley fires and first responders were going throughout the houses, even community members, I know Board Member Starr and Powos was going door-to-door to tell people to evacuate and some people did not want to evacuate. So this slows down the efforts from getting from house to house to make sure that everything is clear. So I will say that if HFD is knocking at your door, just leave. That's really important, but also create a plan within your family on where you're going to go. So if traffic is too heavy coming in, you have to know what is a spot to go to. And if communication gets shut out, you just need to know where your family is. So these are all things that we're discussing, of course, creating a bigger plan. But for me, my number one concern is making sure the roads are open for our people to get in and out and then, and then we're building from there. So thank you to Wainai Valley Homestead for taking that initiative. I know that there are some other ahupua's that are also doing the same thing, so I just wanted to mahalo you guys for that.
Okay, one last comment. The city and county do not remove derelict cars. There's, there's not a contract between the city and county and DHHL. So if you make a request for the city to remove derelict cars, they will not because they do not have a contract with DHHL, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay Dana, online, go ahead.
Aloha Samantha, recently there was a community engagement meeting for preparedness and mitigation at the Huanji grounds and nobody, none of our elected officials sent any representation to these meetings, which are important discussions because so many other organizations were present at the meeting to include homestead, the military, city, some members of the state. I hope that our elected officials participate in the next meeting, which is on September 12th. That's all I have for you right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Come.
Senator, I'm on board, besting Star, I'll cruise Koha'avaipaina. I just wanted to put it on record, as Koha'avaipaina diplomat, just like the Rick, our mayor here in the city and county, the governor has just recognized and is cooperative with Koha'avaipaina. And the movement about what's been going on, especially me asking and telling the community for Friday, had to do and move in regards to Senators' moves with Brendan and Diamond. And I applaud and I thank you again for that in that sense. And one of them is in the works, also in discussion with Makua and I'm expecting everyone to work together and go forward. And I'm expecting everyone to work together and go forward for the kingdom's sake. Thank you.
Go ahead. Babe Kapua, um, so again echoing Makua. It's better to start the communications, uh, the meetings, engagement with the community sooner than later. Um, because we don't want to wait till it's too late, uh, to get everybody together. But we do, it was named the two primary groups, Malama Makua and Hui, um, Hui, Malama Makua. Yeah. Plus, you know, the other community members that have been engaged but aren't affiliated with either. Um, but the other thing is, well, several things with the egress and ingress, uh, egress and ingress, uh, with the tsunami. I think, maybe I didn't hear it, but as far as when the roads shut down, we need to put that notice out as soon as possible. So it's like, you know, when people are driving and now they discover that they can't come on or get out, it's like, it's kind of too late. So as soon as they make this decision that we're going to shut the roads down at four, five or six o'clock, then put it out so that people know whether they're going to drive home or not. But like what was said, if you're already in a safe place, just stay there. Don't congest the roads. Cause really the last place you really want to be is on the road. You, you know, so nobody should really be on the roads unless you're going up for a tsunami. But that brings me back to a wildfire. So the meeting that we're having on Thursday is just for Yani Valley because there is no cookie cutter, right? So everybody is different. But it's a start, right? So, and, and that's the thing is that all of our communities get started somewhere. And you have the community people besides those residential people. We're fortunate, the homesteads, that we have the department supporting us and they have some fundings that's going to support the gatherings. But that doesn't stop any community from doing it. Like I was just talking with Lily in Maili, that she was directly affected. And so we were at another meeting and even though we spoke a lot about Homestead, it says, it doesn't stop other community individuals from doing your community, even if it's just your street. You know, you start with your street and then you move on. Um, the other thing, sorry, is that what, um, Lina had said earlier about opposition from our legislative officials. I'm not sure if you're one of them, but if you have opposition to the plan of them looking for solutions for houseless. And I go to the Kupuna Council, so I like to think that I'm part of it, but I'm not the decision-making part of it. If you're not part of that, could you explain why you oppose that particular one? Because I just love the idea of how the Kupuna Council is moving, is taking action. It took me a while to get situated when they took action with, um, Hawaiian homelands out in Maili because that's a whole different thing. But then after a while, I says, you know what? We have places. Our, our Kupuna, our people are not sheltered. But what holds me back was the liability. You know, if somebody shouldn't be there and something happens and they hold the department liable, there goes, it could be a whole community development coming from that liability. And that's what we always have to consider. So if you could speak to what Lena's statement was earlier. Mahalabu.
Thank you. Um, so I, I'm assuming we're talking about the, what property? Oh, okay. Um, yeah. So I, I, I had originally opposed, which I still do oppose, uh, is because that lot is within a flood zone. Um, and so for safety reasons, I don't see how we would be able to build any housing. And if we're going to be building, building it for our most vulnerable, our Kupuna, how does that keep them safe? Um, so that's just pretty much for me. Um, but yeah, nothing personal, I hope. Uh, it's just, it's for safety reasons. It's a flood zone.
There's already pre-existing homes and businesses in flooding zone. So it's like, we're going to hold it back from these who could use it while we already have people that, not by their choice, but they're there as well. So it just seems to be like a hard place, Kalamai. And I would hope that you'd be able to support it or have some other solutions that you could work with the Kupuna Council with. Mahalo.
Chair, if I can just make a comment on, sorry, real quick, one comment on that whole situation with the flood zone in that area. This incorrect information. The flooding was more on the lower part where Kali had built that, um, that complex there. The upper part has sewage attachment already, infrastructure already. And that was not, there's been times when we had the heavy rains and we went to check and see what kind of flood, flooding happened there. There was nothing. Yeah. And so, yeah, just letting you know that that's not a situation up at the front part of that, that location that we were concerned about. It was more of the, and the back part.
Yeah. So from what I understand, um, Director Don Chang, DLNR, um, seems to think it's a good project. So if you folks already have, uh, approval from DLNR, then you don't, you guys don't need us. So if you guys already have that, then you guys should be good to go. Um, yeah.
Um, online, we have, um, Kale Salcedo. Go ahead.
Aloha. I just want to thank you for taking a step, uh, the legislature, uh, Samantha DeCorte. Because, um, right now people got to realize we have in collaboration by your folks' office. We haven't had that. We all know, let's face the reality. We haven't been having that. That collaboration for the previous, once in a while they calm, they'll calm. You know, so at least this is communication. This is an open door. And this is listening and hearing our community. So I really thank you about that. But as for the tsunami warning, um, there seems to be an issue with, um, what do you call it, hon? Because we didn't hear it at one point in Makaha Valley, the sirens. There seems to be an issue. We have heard the third time on the sirens. We did not hear the first one. And then we just noticed there are people coming up on, um, Makaha Valley side, which we, you know, we understand the safety. But as HPD said, not everyone wanted to leave their homes and some of the Kupunas, they cannot just leave because they have no handy bags. So we go on our way, try to make sure our Kupunas are safe, you know? And if we have to reach out to them, we'll reach out to them. But a lot of them do not want to leave their houses because they know they're going to get hit. Because everybody know when, once they see the Kupuna leave, and especially if you live next to the beach, they know their house is going to get robbed. That's why they don't want to leave because all their hard work and everything in their house will be gone. And I don't think they should, uh, be, you know, they will be the victim. So that's one, you know, that's one other thing. But I'd just like to thank you for, uh, being there and supporting and listening to your committee. I mean, she not going to have to answer people for everything, but at least she's there. You know, so communication is very important. And benefit, give the benefit of the doubt. Because we had been left behind, back burners for too long. And I have very strong faith that we've been heard now and not just shut down because of, um, personal, people's personal interests in the committees or whatever it may be. But we have to work together to become one big Ohana who can understand each other. So like I said, we gotta work together. Communication is important. And I thank you, Senator. Samantha, Legislature Samantha, I thank you so much for communicating and being straight forward with our community. Give up the good job and let's keep the communication open. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Auntie. I will say, um, for the sirens, just so you guys know, I am working with Haime. Um, we do have three sirens that are inoperable right now. So it's been, um, a process that I have been working with them even before I was elected. Um, but, uh, this one prompted a, a little bit more of a push. Uh, so I'm continuing to work with them. I will say that, uh, there has been a lot of damage to these sirens. Um, it's not just wear and tear. There is physical damage, uh, from, uh, people that are around in these areas. So, uh, so we'll continue to fix what we can fix, but also we want to just let our community know that we have to take care of, uh, whatever facilities. Yeah, those kinds of things. But yeah, three sirens are out, one in Miley, one in, um, uh, we're further down in Makua and then one in Makaha. So I'm working on that.
I, I just want to say thank you. Yeah, thank you. Because, um,
Okay, Auntie, we gotta move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item. So State House Representative Muraoka.
Thanks, Kelly, for waiting.
Um, aloha. Sorry, Rep. Muraoka cannot be here tonight, but, um, he did want to share with you guys or with everyone that, one, we're very thankful for the, to the Department of Transportation for clearing all the trees from the Makai side of the road, that now you can actually see the streetlights. So, um, that's been a big push of his is trying to get the trees trimmed because, you know, it does interfere with the lines and poor visibility. Um, also, he did want to, um, thank everyone that was able to help individuals get off the beaches and to save in this time of the tsunami. He was out there with his flatbed, moving individuals as well from the beaches and Porunua. So, um, he wants to invite everyone to the House Republican Caucus Listening Tour. Um, where he will be joined on August 27th with the other Republican Caucus members from the legisla- legislature. Um, I, I hate talking on a mic. Um, where it's going to be at YNMA. I left flyers in the back. There is a QR code to help every, help us, help you answer some of the questions. So there's flyers in the back. It's on August 27th at Arco Safety Christian Center. But it is a week-long event. So if you cannot make it that day, there is in Mililani, Moanalua, Ava Beach, Hawaikai and Yani. So if you guys have any questions, you guys can email us or call our office. We're always there, um, and responsive. So.
Thank you. Um, next is House.
Who's going to give out the number?
Our office number is 808-586-8460. And we are located by upstairs from Tasty Freeze. Call our office. Sometimes we're out in meeting.
Awesome. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Um, we're going to move on to the next because we, we're running out of time. And if you have any questions for Rep. Muraoka's office, please, um, email or call. They're very responsive. They answer the phone. Next is State House Rep. Kila. Okay, next one is Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Donna Puna.
Aloha, everybody. I have some follow-up questions. From last time, there was a question about HPD cultural training. Uh, is the practice of providing documents via court issued subpoenas consistent with other police forces around the US? HPD says, each jurisdiction may have their own limitations, requirements and policies due to in-place practices as well as respective district and circuit court level rulings. With nearly 18,000 law enforcement agencies nationwide, it would be inaccurate to surmise or provide detailed information regarding the consistency amongst these agencies. Uh, HPD police officer break down, how many police officers not from YNI have been rotated into YNI? HPD responds, uh, the department does not track or list which employees are not living in the district that they serve. Our officers enforce all laws, whether they live in the area they work or not. Illegal grubbing. What is the status of illegal grubbing at the property located at 86927 Pukai Koahivi Place? DPP responds, the notices of violations for grading without a permit uh, at 86927 Pukai Koahivi Place remain uncorrected. The notices of violation are escalated to notices of orders, notice of order for assessment of daily fines and administrative means recorded on the property. Uh, the next question was, uh, DHHL permitting, what's the number of, uh, permits uh, in the last five years to come through DPP? And there's some other questions related, but we're going to, uh, request next, an extension on the street response as we determine the capability to execute the requested search. A DPP non-compliance with SMA laws, what are the policies and penalties for not complying with SMA laws? DPP says, a proposed active, activities within the SMA that meet the definition of development under revised ordinances upon Honolulu Chapter 25 will require an SMA permit prior to obtaining a construction or building permit. Non-compliance with this requirement will be in violation of the SMA ordinance. Pursuant to ROH Section 25 dash 5.4, review fees and processing fees are doubled for permits and environmental disclosures after the proposed work is completed or citation has been issued. Um, and then it says, a pre-assessment consultation for the Samoan District Council Church and Meeting Facility Environmental Assessment was received on May 5th, 2025. DPP provided comments on May 13th, including the need for an SMA permit for the proposed project. Lastly, a RISE classification, is the RISE project allowed under the governor's emergency proclamation or not? DPP's response, DPP recognized the RISE Kalhalae project as a governor's EP project on February 3rd, 2025, and is exempt from certain regulations under revised ordinances upon Honolulu Chapter 21 land use ordinance. The project was certified as meeting the requirements for eligibility as set forth in the rules pertaining to construction of homeless dwelling units by the governor's coordinator on homelessness on October 3rd, 2024. Under those rules, counties may adopt an expedited approval process to support the provisions while ensuring that improvements constructed pursuant to the proclamation meet life safety standards as applying by the counties. The RISE project will require construction and building permits to ensure life safety standards are met. That's all I have, but if you have any questions, uh, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we're going to move on to Honolulu Council Member Andrea Topola.
Chair, for a sake of time, we're moving on. I, I wanted to ask to, in regards to the cultural sensitive training documents.
Because we're running out of time. We gotta get out of here. We're on a timer.
Hi, aloha, Chair.
Okay.
Go ahead, Andrea. Sorry.
It's okay. Aloha, Chair, aloha, board members. Thank you, Senator and Kelly and those who went before me. Thank you, um, Director Puna for all of your updates. I'm going to answer a few questions from last, uh, month. So James Cowals asked about what, how the jet skis are doing at Ocean Safety. I do have a report from the chief that we have 10 new jet skis and they're being retrofitted to help to rescue. So they should be out there soon. He also asked about where the finance rep went. He actually now works for DHR. Auntie Kapua asked a question about PVT, said, what will happen with the land after it's closed? It needs to be monitored for 30 years. So nothing can be built there. They said the area in the front where there is no landfill, they're, they may turn into a flower garden. Any other questions can be, um, forwarded to them. I had an update about Kalponi Park that was asked. So in two months ago, DHHL gave the city a 30-year land lease, which now allows us to, um, use bonds so that we can do the play apparatus that the community requested. We have a watershed BWS town hall meeting on August 26th from 10 to 11. It's going to be virtual. On August 30th, we're going to be cleaning at Lahilahi with Malama Rising, Adam and his group. So if you guys want to join us, I do believe Kika has the flyers there. Those are all the questions from last month and the upcoming events. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Topola. Um, next, we're going to go to the Army.
Good evening, Board, uh, and community members. Sean Stroh here, uh, Commander on Schofield barracks. And I'll, I'll be your representative going forward, uh, to correct the, the name on there. Uh, I just have a couple of things for you real quick. Um, one, uh, we have a job fair coming up, 19 August, uh, at the Amano Military Reservation or the HMR. Um, that's on, uh, 8:30 to 1400. Uh, we do expect some job offers and provisional hiring to occur that day. Uh, there's two ways you can Uh, there's two ways you can apply. One, uh, H-I-M-W-R dot com, H-I-M-W-R dot com. You can apply online. Or you can walk in. Uh, if you decide to walk in, uh, bring two references, please, your ID, uh, social security card and your resume. Uh, just a couple of examples of what, uh, could be there for you. Business operations, golf course, bowling alley, uh, and child and youth services. Child and youth services comes with some unique benefits such as access to the commissary, um, retirement plans, the rec centers, uh, and the post exchange. Um, some training advisories for awareness, uh, three items, jungle school, aerosol school, and artillery and mortar fires. Uh, for jungle school and aerosol school, you're looking at, uh, blank fire day and night and some helicopters. Uh, the dates for those two trainings are four to nine, 11 to 16, and 18 August. For their artillery and mortar fires, uh, that'll be day and night. And the dates for those are one to eight, 15 to 22, and 25 to 28 August. Uh, and then just for your awareness, there is a number you can call and you can get automatic updates. That number, uh, is 808-787-1528. That'll give you all the automatic updates. So you don't have to take notes from me tonight and it'll just send it right to you. Uh, two other pieces, I'll be real quick. Uh, Wounded Warrior Canoe Regatta, uh, coming up on 23 Aug, August from 7:40 in the morning to four in the afternoon to help our wounded warriors and our service members. Uh, began in 2009, is a pretty great event. Um, and then the last thing is just for, for awareness is the Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center Training is coming up in October to November. I don't have, uh, details for you tonight on the time and timing of it. Um, but historically, it comes with some traffic and congestion. I just wanted to bring that to your awareness. Thank you.
Okay, sir, can you spell your first name, please, for the record?
Yep, first name is Sean, S-E-A-N. Last name is Stroh, as you see on my uniform, S-T-R-O-H, and I'll be here each month.
Okay, appreciate that.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Commander. Um, so you were talking about the live firing, it's gonna be day and night. Um, what is the nighttime? Is it, is there a specific time or is it all night? Because I live up in Pu'auwaina Valley, we've been, you know, we hear it, you know, all the time. So what time would, would that be in the nighttime?
Yes, sir. Uh, on the information I have, up until midnight. Yes, sir.
Any other question in person? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Um, Kika, can you assist us if, um, anyone in the room has questions that you can either answer or take back to, um, Councilwoman Topola? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone in person has any questions for Councilwoman Topola's office? Okay, tell her, I said mahalo. Anyone online has any questions for, okay, Dana, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, just the same question I asked Samantha. There was a coordinated effort to provide some community input in regards to fire mitigation and other kind of natural disasters that might occur in our coals. Um, there was no representation from our office. Next meeting September 12th, if she can send somebody.
Kika acknowledged that she understood and heard you. Thank you. Uh, Johnny May, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, the question I have for Councilmember, this is regarding HPD scanner. Um, I currently, the council supports it. I too support it for this reason. Whenever the, it seems that Y and I is an open book to the medium. There was an incident at Koalina. Um, it was, uh, uh, for, um, murder or some sort of that kind of incident occurred. And we only heard it once. And there was nothing, no coverage afterwards. So to be fair, the scanning hopefully will allow news coming from gated community, uh, inflow, um, affluent community. It's fair game. A lot of time, Y and I is an open book to all the, um, negative news that we have. So it's a fair game. It doesn't, um, hold back on gated community and affluent community. Like I said, Koalina, they had one incident. It only was mentioned once and that's it from the media, nothing else. Thank you.
Kika, I do have something to take back to the council member. Although I know, um, Haupu Drive and Makaha Valley Road and Keely Drive are all privately owned roads. Um, as I was returning from being up in a mountain, um, at 7:15 on the tsunami evening, that road was loaded with cars and people with their pop tents trying to come to a safe area. Unfortunately, because it is all overgrown, there is no safe space to park up there. There is no lighting. It was pitch dark and it was very, very dangerous. I mean, that's, I barely could go 10 miles an hour on that road because of everybody just flowing into the roadway. And I understand the emergency situation, but, um, maybe we can talk to the property owners because the HK owns Makaha Valley Road, H, sorry, Stanford Car, KH owns Makaha Valley Road. Um, Haupu Drive is owned by Stanford Car. And most of Keely Drive is now jointly owned between Ma'ou and HRT. So if we can start having some real conversations on emergency preparedness for our community when we all have to go Ma'uka. And how, how, how can we start beginning that, reigniting that conversation? Because we once had a group in this community that was having those deep conversations. It was very dangerous with children, with families, with cars, I mean, boats. I was, wow, it was very, and they were all the way down to almost 7:11. There was many cars up in the valley. And I don't blame them. I really don't. But there was no place for anybody to go. In the past, in decades before, people used to go to the resort and parked in their parking lot and parked in their overflow area, but those no longer exist. So our community goes to the sides of the roads and on the road, unfortunately. Anybody come to the mic, just state your name and then your question.
Aloha, uh, Carlo Tenawaki again to echo what the board is saying about that, the road. It's privately owned by KH Group and Makaha Development now. Uh, they recently got, uh, their liquor license to serve alcohol till two in the morning. And I voiced, uh, opposition through my attorney and I showed up and testified twice and it still got passed. And so there's no streetlights on that road. There's tons of blind curves. There's no sidewalks. There's tourists, um, guests, uh, s- schoolchildren walking open down that road. We need to have lights and, uh, s- signs and all sorts of stuff on that road if they're gonna have a liquor license and they're gonna have people coming up in and out of that country club or that resort. So however many hours, we need to have lighting. My family and the, and the neighbors all through Makaha Valley are on that road. So I just hope that there's some movement on, um, improvements to that road for safety. And there, uh, by the way, last, and within the last 12 months, there was two hit-and-run fatalities on that road. Um, we don't know what the cause was, but that's why I was asking the police about what some of the, um, citations were for DUIs. Thank you.
Go ahead, last one.
To share that, the day of the tsunami, Joe Jordan is right, like Keely Drive, Amakaa, um, Valley Road was packed. But the golf course did open up to allow people to go in. By the time I left, never leave my house till seven o'clock. By the time I went up, the golf course was full, but they went open up, but they caught, caught a quarry parking lot. And it could have took those people on the road. And when we had our meeting last week, Friday, um, we had, um, the, I mean, the country club had said that they would be willing to work with community as having that as a safe space for us to evacuate and let the community know. And we've also talked about coming up with plans by our Aho Pua'as or by our Elys, um, to go and see who is our Kupunas and how we're gonna help, right? Um, and again, what Dana is saying and what Auntie Dem is saying, like, it's hard because we wanna work with everybody. But unfortunately, all of our elected officials don't come and speak with us on these things. So when they go back to the departments, rather it's Haima or Risk Management, whatever department they're talking with, we already had the meeting, we already had the discussion. So it's like kinda wasting people's time to have multiple meetings. And this is just the beginning. It's not to say that Kupuna Council is the on, know all and say all. It's a platform to have these discussions that nobody's having, where we're not getting our hands tied by Robert's Rule of Order or Sunshine Laws and all those other stuffs. So, um, I just wanted to mahalo the country club. I know we get some issues going on, but they did open up for somebody like me that live on Hanalee Street to go up there. Yeah. Oh, and I also wanted to say, the vibe tonight on this board, very porno. And I mahalo you guys, because when I was coming here today, I had anxiety, right? There's certain people that was on top of the screen that came across very aggressive. And I'm glad they weren't here today because the energy wouldn't have been as good. So I mahalo you guys for stepping into this place. And, um, I hope that as it continues, we stay in porno and aloha.
Is there any more questions? We have two minutes. If any more questions in person. I know Gina, you had something. Can you bring it forward to the, to, so he can put it on record for Donna Puna, right? About the cultural.
Oh, yeah, uh, I wrote it down. I can, I can actually give it to him, but yeah.
Okay.
I did what she asked for as far as getting a subpoena for that documents.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Thank you, everybody for coming. Appreciate you guys and meeting is adjourned.